Six twenty-nine.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, for the board's consideration, we have a recommendation for two adjustments. The first would be to move item one from J, new business, the presentation, to follow adjustments to the agenda. And also to add new business J six, moving J six, adding J six and moving six and seven currently to seven and eight. And new item would be appoint a board member to the dropout prevention committee.
I move that we adjust the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Mrs. Thomas, who was the second? I heard two of them. You get to pick.
Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Hudson, thank you.
Okay, student presentation.
Good evening. I wanted to introduce our wonderful guests this evening. This past summer, we had a summer school program at the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School that included a morning of learning and fun that you're about to hear about with wonderful teachers who will introduce themselves and students who have come to join us this morning, this afternoon, evening, whatever it is. Guess I'm tired. And then in the afternoon, they were able to go to camp at Webb Pond. And because of the support of the Ellsworth community and you, the board, we were able to include in our budget the funds to support them to go to camp. So they were able to have one full month throughout July of learning and fun in the morning and fun in the outdoors in the afternoon. So it's a program I'm very proud of and I'm very excited they're all here to come share this with you. So let's see, who is going to start? We are going to get this, we have a presentation for you and some... See, there we go. You gonna start? Okay. You gonna tell them in the microphone what your name is?
Hi, my name is Keenan Beal and I'm gonna show you some pictures of the Title I Summer School Program, 2019.
You wanna stand here? You stand right here now, click.
This was our dinosaur project where we could see if we could outrun a dinosaur. So we started on one foot, like, up there, one foot right there. And then we put like a left or right foot and then we stepped across and then we made... And see if we could jump over right here and see if we could outrun a dinosaur. This was our Tompkins project. We made like these little pictures of the book we read, of like a Tompkins, it was a book we read.
Here, look at here, and talk to them so they can hear you in the microphone.
We were learning stories from other places that Tompkins, Sweden. We were making friends in the gym. We were pushing and like pushing a cart and bringing people who couldn't walk, like persons with broken legs and everything, around the room. And we had some games right there and we were making friends in the gym.
Who's this?
That was Hannah Mary.
Hannah Mary volunteers at the school with you guys, right?
Yep.
She's great. Can you say who all the people are in the picture?
Okay, so that, right in the background is Ms. Palmer and then in front we have Maya and Rayleigh. Thank you, Lucas.
Who's here?
That.
Who's that? You guys can help me handle?
And Carlina. And that's my little brother Cameron. And I don't remember her name.
Tori.
Tori.
Click.
So we were, we took Coke bottles and we put Mentos in them. It made a huge explosion. We tried it with like bubbly water. It did not work at all 'cause it didn't have the fizz like Coke and like the other sodas we tried it on. And then we, over here, we watched videos of how to do it. And one of them, we watched where we put Sprite and then we put Mentos in it. It went high, like a long way higher than a Coke.
Is that the Mystery Science? So they were using, so the teachers use a video program called Mystery Science that has a lot of different videos that talk about projects and engage the students. And that's another thing that are, that you have all supported us having for the kids. What are these pictures of?
These are pictures of what we did over the weekend. We did like fire, some people did fireworks. And yeah, this is what you can pretty much see right here.
Oh, there's Fourth of July stories. What's next?
This is Miss M.W. reading us a book. We were like making, like drawing while we were listening to the story and we always showed it up on the big screen of what we, like, used our imagination to create. This is where we were at recess. We were either playing outside, playing soccer, or in the gym, playing with jump ropes, basketballs, footballs. This is Lucas over here with the little foot thing. And I don't know what it's called.
I see someone familiar over there. Is that all we know? Can you come introduce yourself, guys? Can you tell them what your name is in the microphone?
Hi, I'm Lucas.
Lucas, you look like you were having fun, right? What was your favorite part of camp?
Swimming.
Swimming in the afternoon? Excellent. Are you going to swim? Come on, you.
Hi, I'm Phoebe Story.
What was your favorite part of camp?
Maybe it has to be frog catching.
Frog catching? Frog catching. How about in the morning? What'd you guys like doing in the morning at school?
Um, I love how we read a book and drew pictures of it.
My favorite has to be coming into school, be like, another day, another day of reading. It's always something to happen.
I like that. What about you, Lucas?
I don't know.
Something?
Yeah.
You guys want to add something about, I'd like you to meet our wonderful teachers. This is Rebecca Maddox Wilber.
Hi, everyone. And Miss M.W., as they said, these guys and the other thirty-ish kids were just awesome.
You wanna come right here and talk in the microphone 'cause then the whole community can hear you.
Yeah, this is my, that's my tech crew and party planner here. These two are their chief helpers. I was first in line to want to help. And actually during the program, I think, I mean, you liked it all, but I think you really liked the experiments the most, the Mystery Science. And Mystery Science has all kinds of cool discovery learning where you do little experiments and you write down your results and there's, we had some surprises and a couple of disappointments. Like the seed head guy, that didn't work out.
Oh, yeah.
But you know, where you put seeds in a sock and you keep it wet and it's supposed to grow hair and it didn't. We didn't, our paper towels, yeah, our paper towels were not absorbent enough. But anyways, that was our only real failure, I think. And it was humorous, actually.
It would've worked if we had the right paper towel.
So these fellows were all in my group. We had first and second grade group with Miss Mitchell and Miss Peterson, Miss Pete. And then she actually was with me and then Jen Trobridge was with Beth. They had one, two, we had three, four. So we would start our day with the stories. Some of the stories are up there on the board that were their favorites. They mentioned the Swedish one. And that started out being like I would read and they would do comprehension type things. But then I noticed some really incredible artworks. We decided to change it up a little bit. So they had all their drawing stuff and art stuff right from the beginning and they would watch and listen and draw and created some really amazing pictures. And then they'd write a sentence or two about why they liked the story or what struck them most. In the middle, we had the recess or gym time, which you see those pictures.
Probably snacks.
And, yep, snack. What happened? Can't forget snack. That was like, that was pretty tops about halfway through the day. And then would resume our science. We'd do the book in the morning and do the science in the afternoon. What was your favorite science experiment?
Probably gotta be the Mentos.
The Mentos. Yeah, the sparkly water, that was like a... What was it exactly? It was just one of those...
It's seltzer water.
Yeah, it doesn't work. Just so you know.
It was a sac, yeah.
Yeah, she sacrificed it for us and it was so good.
Seltzer water.
So yeah, and not everyone was there that day, so they got to do it two days. So that was, that was pretty awesome. But anyhow, we really thank you for supporting the program. I can't tell you really who has more fun, them or us. It's really a beautiful time. I hope so. But I know I had a wonderful time and these guys did too. Learning doesn't have to be boring or tiresome or tedious, does it?
Yeah.
Because we learned a lot and we had fun the whole time, I think. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, high five. You guys did great.
And I was hoping Tara's gonna tell you a little bit of our end of the summer.
Yes, oh yeah, the big hoo-ha.
Hi, I'm Tara Peterson. I'm the tech that worked with the three, third and fourth graders with these guys. We had an end of the school, well, end of summer school party for the parents. And Keenan helped do our slideshow for them and we had an ice cream buffet. And a lot of the parents and grandparents came and got to see the projects that the kids did that we have on the boards down here. So they got to show off some of their work and have some ice cream and see some of the stuff that they've been doing. And it was a lot of fun. We got to order some new supplies from what you could see, well...
Yeah, you could've seen.
You saw a minute ago that was up there. We had the, whoop! Oh, we're switching.
Oh, we have more.
There we go. So we, some of the equipment we got this year was new for the kids for their physical fitness time. So we got some, the kids had a lot of input. So we got new soccer nets this year. We got cornhole this year, badminton. What else did we get, great guys?
Hula hoops.
Hula hoops. We did some sidewalk shop, sidewalk chalk.
I got those things where you throw the ball in.
Oh, the sticky nets for the ball throw.
Soccer.
Soccer, soccer was a big hit.
And I think, the things that Lucas was wearing was...
The skipper.
Yes.
We got the skipper's and a couple of the balls. And it just gives them, you know, a nice break and some energy to get going. So we had a lot of fun. And as Miss M.W. said, we had just as much fun as they did, I think. I got to play a lot of frisbee.
Yeah.
With you, yeah, with you guys. So we had fun.
Any questions?
I have a question. I didn't hear the answer to the question that was posed earlier. Can you outrun a dinosaur?
Well, that was, we had surprising results this year.
Yeah, so...
So there was a specific dinosaur and we knew the stride length. So we marked out the stride length and then you had to do, you know, the giant steps to see if you could pass their stride length. And most everyone did. It was like a couple people. But some might, some might quite a bit, like Phoenix.
Was it a, was it a carnivorous dinosaur or...
It was a smaller one and it was really not one that I had been familiar with. I had sharp teeth. It did have big sharp teeth. So what do we know then? Was it a meat eater? Had sharp teeth?
Yeah, carnivore.
I think it was a...
Carnivore.
We did, we did an experiment.
So it's one that you'd want to be able to outrun.
Well, that's true, yeah, it was. Because it was about not getting eaten. That was the goal.
Yeah.
And most of them did not get eaten.
Good, I'm glad most of them didn't.
And we also want to thank Jen Gassie and Jennifer Trobridge, who are also part of the program. We're not able to be here tonight, but they were a big part of working with all the teachers here.
Does Beth want to tell a little bit about the first and second?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so first and second grade didn't focus as much on science. We focused more on writing, reading, and math activities. So we basically in the morning would come in after breakfast and have four different activities that the kids could participate in, two math, one reading, and one writing. So they can not forget everything they learned over the school year. So we played a lot of math games. We, we use science for writing, actually. So we had a question that was asked of them and they had to write what they thought the answer was. So it could be something like, "Do sunflowers talk?" or something like that. So they could be creative, but also think about, you know, "How do plants communicate? Do they communicate?" So we talked about those kind of things. So different ways to think about science in writing. And yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun and I think they learned a lot. So some kids learned to play some new games that they hadn't played in their classroom and other kids that had played it in their room taught them. So they got to learn from each other. Any questions? That's about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You think you finished it? I think that you did too. Did everything with presentations, chemical reactions?
Okay, we'll do that one.
Oh, you want to explain that real quick? Okay.
So we took vinegar and I think, what was it?
Bacon water.
Bacon soda. We put the vinegar in a baggie and we put some baking soda in it and it exploded. My bag literally went flying out. Little like waters come squirting out of my bag and it was so funny because it sprayed me right in the face. And then it like went to, some other people got hit with it. Some people's didn't explode as much because they didn't have like as much as other people. So that's ours.
Oh, there's a picture, there's a picture of the family day.
Yeah.
Right? This is the big event.
This is where we had like ice cream. Families came to come see like...
Big turnout.
Yeah. We saw, like in the, we also had the slideshow wave over there. There's like the boards that are over there. This is the older kid ones.
They're the young girls. Okay. Okay. Oh, there you go. No, you have to say it. You say it. You read it.
See you next year!
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Item D, approval of minutes for August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I move that we approve the minutes of the August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor? Thank you. Item E, correspondence communication.
For the first time in a long time, I don't have any for you.
Okay. Item F, public dis...
May I say something on the communication?
Sure.
I'd just like to take just a moment to thank the board and Mr. Higgins and the community for supporting me through my absences from the past couple of months. And just thank you very much, everyone, for being supportive.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. First, I'd like to talk about Rachel's Challenge, which is gonna be at the middle school on Monday, gonna be at the high school on Tuesday. And it's a full day at the high school and a lot of activities and presentation in the morning. And then that night, there's a forum at Ellsworth High School in the auditorium. And that's for all community members and students that want to come, parents, but it's mostly towards community members. Looking forward to Rachel's Challenge. It's a huge program that reaches thousands of schools each year. And I've been involved in it at a previous school that I was at and it's a terrific program and it'll leave a long-lasting effect on the students and the staff. It's, it's really, really good. We are gonna be inducting our second sports Hall of Fame group, October eleventh and twelfth. And I'll remind you at the next board meeting. But anybody that wants to come, they can call the main office to get information on that. Friday night at the football game, they'll be introduced at halftime. And then Saturday at noon time, we're gonna have the Hall of Fame dinner. And inductees are Paul Furlot for cross country, Jennifer Wadman Myers for soccer and coaching, Cory DeWitt for basketball, cross country, and outdoor track, Chad Sattler for soccer, Terry Spurling for basketball, Danny Kane for baseball, and C.C. McKeckern for swimming. I've talked to all of them and all of them plan to come, including Mr. Sattler. Chad is, is in North Carolina, but he's making plans right now so he can come back for that weekend. And so we're excited to host them. And student numbers are rising. These have changed since I sent this to you last week. We have two foreign exchange students coming, which is exciting. They'll be here sometime next week. One from Denmark and one for, from Mexico. And I talked to guidance today and they're admitting two more students. They're registering tomorrow. So I'll keep you up to date on those changes when we have them. Any questions? It's been a good start to the year. Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Clifford. What were the dates on the Hall of Fame induction?
They are October eleventh and twelfth.
And for community members who are interested in attending, they just simply need to call the high school office?
Yep, yep. Any questions on anything? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabanelli?
Good evening. On September fourth, we held our open house and we did a little bit different format this year. We actually put our students in charge of being the tour guides and they led their families through our school, introduced them to teachers. They really embraced the opportunity to kind of do that for their families and introduce their teachers and myself. And it was a wonderful evening. We had a great turnout and the kids just loved being the tour guides. So that was a fun little twist to our open house for us. Like Mr. Clifford said, we are very excited to be hosting Rachel's Challenge on the sixteenth. We have in the middle school, and I know Mrs. Lewis is gonna echo some of my sentiments as well because we're kind of a duo, but we have three presentations that will be occurring in the middle level on Monday. One is going to be for grades seven and eight. Another is going to be for grades five and six. And then we have a leadership training for some of our students in the afternoon. On the evening of the sixteenth at six-thirty, we will also be hosting that community night. And we really welcome every community member, parent, come back. We're gonna be providing some childcare and refreshments that evening. So we will have places for the younger kids to go while the parents and grandparents can attend. And we, we've set out a motto, K eight, kindness starts with me. And we are hoping that Rachel's Challenge is gonna build on that. So we are really excited to get that program underway and see what it brings for our school and our community. Fall sports are underway. We have several students participating. And the first cross country meet is actually on Thursday and our first soccer games are Monday night, but we are holding them earlier so people can, can get back for Rachel's Challenge. And I would also like to say if anybody can't make it Monday night to our community event, they are more than welcome, even parents of K eight students, to go to the high school event on the seventeenth. So please don't feel like you have to be there the sixteenth. The opportunity is there on the seventeenth as well and vice versa. Any high school parents or community members are welcome on the sixteenth as well at our school. Volunteer training happened this afternoon with Mrs. Lewis. We also had a PTF meeting and things are underway. We have a PTF picnic, welcome back picnic on Thursday afternoon, which is really exciting. And we are rocking and rolling at the middle school. So things are going well and we're off to a great start. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Mrs. Gabby, now I was not even highlighting some of the cooperative learning that has gone on with the K to eight staff in total. She's done a marvelous job of bringing and highlighting issues and possibilities to our entire school. So you read my report and you know that we had kindergarten open house before school started. Our numbers did increase since then, but only by four. And we're thinking maybe that's a nice round number. But we opened, we had our open house and had ninety-four percent attendance. And it was marvelous in every way you could imagine. Our students came in excited to be at school, all dressed up and just as cute as they could be, polite and mannerly and parents who were supportive and wonderful. And as I said at our administrative team, we had more pleases and thank yous as they came through the door. And if they forgot, their parents very nicely said, "What did you mean to say?" And it was fantastic. Excuse me. That whole idea of kindness starts with me is so wonderful and pervasive in our culture at this moment. We hope to continue in that vein. When we had volunteer training tonight, we talked about kindness starts with me and how the community members who are able to volunteer, whether they're parents or retired teachers, whoever they are, will add new dimensions to learning and new dimensions to relationships with kids in the best possible ways. We have people in the community whose talents, skills, and knowledge could expand all of what we are doing and take it across our curricula areas. And we think that will be absolutely marvelous. The parents were pretty excited. We sent out the volunteer applications with the first aid packet this year. And as of four o'clock this afternoon, I had fifty-seven applications. I had fourteen parents or, or people representing children. They weren't just parents. They were grandparents. They were aunts and uncles. And trainings, as I mentioned before, will be held the same day as board meetings every month, plus a few additional lunchtimes for those parents that we need to accommodate or those community members we need to accommodate in that way. So it's been absolutely fantastic. I want to share with you that one of the ways that we're incorporating that kindness starts with me conversation into every content area. And we came across this book called Most People. And I want to take just a minute, if you don't mind, because it's the primary teacher in me that needs to share it. And I will hold up the pictures, but you can see the book later. I'll leave one for the board. Most people love to smile. Most people love to laugh. Most people love to see other people smile and laugh too. Most people are good people. Most people want to help when they see someone crying. Most people want to help when they see someone who's in trouble. After you, ma'am. Most people want to make other people, even strangers, feel good. Most people are very good people. People who do bad things can change. There is a seed of goodness inside them waiting to sprout. This book, well, by tomorrow at noon time, will have been read to every K through four classroom. And again, focusing on the fact that most people are really good. And within that book, there's a page that talks about... And within that book, there's a page that talks about if we lined up all the good people in the world, that line would go from one mountaintop around the oceans to the next mountaintop. And the people who are having a hard time would end up in one dark and gloomy room. We have remembrances and anniversaries coming up even tomorrow. We have Rachel's Challenge that is going to give our kiddos more information about ways that they can see how someone else lived a life where they tried to do for others and show that they cared and that kindness is the same. And it's our intent in the K-8 to line up all our most people and to celebrate the goodness that is inside them and to acknowledge the fact that there are times and there are people who struggle and are challenged with that. And that as a human population, our goal really needs to be to help those we can and to be kind every chance we get. We felt that this particular book emphasized that opportunity coming just ahead of Rachel's Challenge. And the other part that we have an intent to do is to thank in some way our first responders for all the work that they do in this community. So we're going to kind of blend those things and take that kindness thought all the way through. What you really want in any organization, any school, is for that to permeate the air, for that to be the expectation, for there to be a common language about how that works, and for the adults to model for the children how best that is evidenced. I also mentioned last time at our last board meeting that we were partnering with the Ellsworth Public Library, and God bless them. Abby Morrow said, "Kathy, we're looking at a concept of engage Ellsworth." And I said, "Well, here's what the school department is doing in September." And we shared what Rachel's Challenge was about. And today, we finalized some of the activities that will then happen in a sort of follow-up partnership with the community meeting on October 23rd at the library, where the public in general will be invited. And Mrs. Gabbi and I very nicely has agreed that a panel of students in the middle school will do a little presentation about what's actually happening in the Ellsworth School Department with Rachel's Challenge. And kindness and how community members can contribute to that culture in a greater learning community will be the focus of that evening. So Abby and her friends have done a marvelous job. We'll continue to have more information and more publicity out. But it's gotten bigger than the high school doing Rachel's Challenge, the middle school doing Rachel's Challenge, the K through 4 joining in that partnership, and now we have community members who would like to be part of that conversation and expand upon it. You can't ask for any more. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions? We're loving it.
No, but I was pretty excited to see kindness starts with me on the advertising board at Pat's Pizza. That was pretty special.
It is pretty special. And one of our teachers had met, one of the middle school teachers had mentioned it, and they said, "That's the kind of thing we want to be all over." And it says 5 through 8, Mrs. Gabbi and I said, "There wasn't time." They put that bullet board up before they understood it's K-8. And I said, "No, no, that's okay. That's a great thing for the community to see." So, yeah. But it's the kind of thing that you're going to get people engaged in that conversation. And hopefully, other communities have done. Brewer did Community of Caring, where every business had the motto. Every business was involved in the common language and the reinforcement. Because when we talked at the library and we talked about what community members could do, I said, "Sometimes they'll see kids on the sidewalk doing something good, doing something kind. They need to know. It helps if they reinforce that, if they comment on good manners or wonderful behaviors, any of that. Everything helps." And the other thing I feel really strongly about is our parents need reinforcement for the good and effective parenting practices that they have and they employ, because that pays off. And they don't hear that enough. They hear from their kids at different ages, "Don't we have anything else in the refrigerator?" "Oh, Mom, everybody else is allowed to do it." "Oh, Dad, you're never there." You know, they need the kind of reinforcement that helps sustain us. We have the kids anywhere from six to 10 hours a day, depending on what they're involved in. But they leave us, and they go to other environments. So it takes the whole community, the conversation, it takes the village. We're going to expand on that. And in Ellsworth, it's going to take the whole community, and people get excited the minute you talk to them. So, I love it. Anything else? Anything you wanted to know that I missed, I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles?
Good evening. I want to thank the two new HCTC custodians for the work that they did over the summer. We have a few changes at HCTC this year. First, our early childhood space has been slightly renovated to bring preschool back to HCTC. So Caterpillar Clubhouse is coming back to HCTC again this year. And our roof was finished today. So we have, yay. So we have a new roof at HCTC, which we're really excited about. Next month, I'll be doing a presentation with kids about our middle school camp. But I just wanted to quickly say that we were really excited at the success of it. I'm still having businesses call, asking if we're doing it again, and can they get on the calendar now to participate in it. So businesses were very pleased with how it went, and I think people thought it was a good model to replicate. So I'll be bringing students next month to kind of talk through what they did during the week and some of the things they experienced, that you can hear about that. I've provided enrollment sheets for you. Those were as of Monday around 11 o'clock. Those have changed and will continue to change because ad drop is still going on at the high schools. We're still hovering around that 214 total mark. Lost a couple, keep adding a couple, so I'll give you a final count when we have our board meeting in October. Student spotlight, I'm going to try each month to highlight a different story about a student, just to talk about some of the different successes we have. We have a senior MDI student, Luis Estacio, who is in our CNA program. And this young man is our first student who's ever been employed in an ER department over the summer. Usually, our CNA students at the end of their junior year are employed at the nursing home. Hospitals are hesitant to hire CNAs that young, especially in the ER because of the quickness and the intensity. But he was hired, and they are thrilled with him. And now we're talking more about possibly collaborating and hiring students because of the success of what he did. And he worked 12-hour shifts, just like the adult CNAs, and performed all the same jobs that adult CNAs did, got paid very good money, and he's back his senior year with us. So we wanted to highlight that as a student success story this month. Finally, I'm excited to announce that we'll be hosting another Totally Trades event. We didn't host one last year. We did two years ago. And this year, we're looking at probably 150 freshman girls from across the county. Will be coming to HCTC on October 16th, which is actually PSAT and SAT day at our high school. So I have no students that morning, so it enables us to take more freshmen. And I'm excited by the offerings. We're going to have Darlings, we'll have Jackson Lab. We've also secured a cybersecurity presentation and a hospitality presentation. And this is all funded through federal funds that Totally Trades, Main Works, comes into different career and technical schools, and tries to showcase high-demand jobs that are non-traditional for young girls. So we'll have about 150, I think, when all is said and done, ninth-grade girls on that day come through HCTC. Our open house is tomorrow from 6 to 7. Any families that would like to attend are welcome to come from 6 to 7. And I've included several of our important dates coming up. A couple of the biggest ones that I think are important for the board and the public to know is our fall advisory event is October 23rd. If any of you are available to attend, we always love having leadership members and board members attend that evening for our fall advisory meeting. That gives you an opportunity to hear a quick overview from me about the state of the school, kind of. You get a great meal. And then sometimes we have board members roam, and you get to visit all the different programs. Or you can sit in on a particular one that might be of interest to you, that you might want to learn more about, that you don't know a lot about. But that's a huge community night. We have a lot of community members, usually over 100, come and sit in on meetings and give their input on curriculum assessments and what's going on with programs and changes at our school. So that's a really big night for us. And if any of you are available to attend, we'd love to have you. Any questions?
Thank you.
So our catalogs are hot off the press, so I'm going to pass them around. And my report is also hot off the press, so I'll pass that. I'll put it in the...
Have Teresa put it in the drive. So we've had a very busy summer enrolling students. We generally, you know, so many people around here are working so many jobs in the summertime, so they're not coming out. And I keep hoping to have a little bit of a, you know, personally, in terms of professionally getting my administrative tasks done, hope for a little lull, and there was no lull. We actually already have two graduates this year, which is unusual for us. And we have several more who need, you know, some hours of instruction before they're ready to test. So we're off to a great start. As I said, the catalog is hot off the press, almost quite literally, and should go to out to postal patrons in sometime this week, hopefully in the mail tomorrow. Our website, our online catalog is ready for registrations. One of my big challenges, I feel like I'm fairly tech-aware for my age and experience, but I've been challenged tackling our website. And so it has a new look, it's the same URL, but take a look at it. And as I say in my report, if you look at it over the next month, you'll grow with me in terms of populating that. Our CNA program is starting up the 30th of September, and we have a couple of slots left in that. So spread the word. One thing that I wanted to say, we have lots of, we have several new courses. You can learn to play bridge this semester. We have a new self-defense class that's much more than just the moves, but also being psychologically prepared. I hate to list all of, list them if I'm not going to include all of them, but we have some, a handful of great new courses, as well as some that are backed by popular demand. And we've fine-tuned some of them. We have a very popular watercolor class, and it's always been open to all levels. But there's this group of people that come back again and again, and so I asked Melissa to split it and have real beginners in one class. And so those are the kinds of sort of continuous improvement things that we do. One of my priorities this year is to reach out to employers in Ellsworth to, because we really are a nimble resource for providing very responsive and relevant and accessible and affordable training that we can tailor to meet the individual needs of businesses. So I'm hoping to be able to make the time, which is a challenge for me, to connect with as many businesses as possible. I've met with a couple so far, but I also met with two city departments, because we are all part of the city of Ellsworth. And so I met with the library to work on some collaborations, and I met with the fire department as well. So I'm going to start making those rounds of connecting so that we can all support each other. An example of a really simple collaboration is that people have been asking me about book groups. And so you'll see in the catalog, the library's book clubs are promoted in the catalog, because it's an Ellsworth, it's a catalog for Ellsworth, so. And then the last thing that I'll say is that I think this is kind of interesting. We have a lot of young people actually requesting classes, offerings in adulting. So we're piloting a program. The idea of it is that our teachers, Vanessa and Emily, will develop some modules that we can offer in different ways. But the idea would be to bring community people in to do different pieces of it, you know, financial literacy and also some parenting tips. I was approached by the job training. Loretta Alley works with EMDC, and she is working with people who are just released from jail, who had, were in there for substance abuse issues. And so she was realizing that people didn't know how to sort of set up an apartment or set up a healthy environment for their kids. So this is the beginning of that process. So lots of new things happening. We're having fun. Any questions?
I have one. You have your comic books telling stories in words and images. Is that open to any age? Would people, young people be able to take that?
So our policy, our protocol, I should say, since I'm talking to a legal entity here, our protocol is that, our program is designed for adult students. But we also recognize that we sometimes have enrichment opportunities that are appropriate for younger students. So my priority is to make sure that whoever is in the classes don't impact the experience of adults. And so you basically need permission from me for a younger student to take a class. And there are lots of factors involved, including legal factors. So our adult ed teachers are not necessarily fingerprinted, so they, you can't take the class without a parent, as an example. And the parent has to pay the registration fee. I've sort of figured these things out over the years. But, so that's the long-winded answer to that question. In some cases, definitely. We often have, we usually have a couple of students every year take classes where it's appropriate, and that would likely be one of them. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice-looking catalog.
Yeah. Very nice.
Shout out to Nerlens Starling, as usual.
Ms. Carmen Ramos?
Good evening again. This is a follow-up to our previous presentation of the summer school. I'm so pleased that they were able to come and share what they've been doing with you, because it's fun for me in the summer to go see what they're doing and see how enthusiastic they are. But, and I wanted to let you all know that the morning session is supported. All of the things that they talked about, the mystery science, the new play equipment, all those things are supported through our Title I grant. So that's one of the things that I present to you, and it's nice to be able to see upfront with kids' words what that program does for us in supporting them. And then the afternoon piece is the piece that the Ellsworth community is supporting. And I will say that our community is exceptional in that the challenge for every summer school program throughout the country is how to get kids to come, because they're tired. You know, they've had a long year, and making it appealing to them and exciting for them and providing them incentive is very difficult on many communities. And it's something that throughout my career and all the different educational jobs I've had, we've had to struggle with. So I do want to thank the community for their support when they vote for our school budget and know that that is in there, and it's extremely important to so many families, because many of those kids are kids that would not be able to participate in anything in the summer and would be at home. So it is something that makes Ellsworth extremely exceptional, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Just quickly, I wanted to let you know how our opening days went as the school year started. Our new teacher orientation was held on Tuesday, August 27th. Information was provided on payroll and human resources, the Atlas Curriculum Management System, PD and Focus, which provides online professional development for our teachers. And this year, we had a new teacher checklist, which provided all kinds of resources to teachers about where they can find the information they need in each of their buildings, how they get the help they need, getting forms filled out, where they find the supplies, who to talk to. who to talk to, and that was received, very, was received well. We were excited to meet our new teachers who've joined us from several different states in America, and we, and bring with them a diversity of experience and expertise. At the very beginning, Mr. Higgins asks them all to share something interesting about themselves, and as do we all, and it is really one of the most fun times of the year, to listen to what people bring to the table and bring to Ellsworth. So very excited about the new group of teachers we have. We are going to provide continued training and support throughout the year for this group through our new teacher cohort. The first meeting of this group was actually held this afternoon with April Clifford, who graciously offered to lead the group through tutorials and discussions of IT practices and applications in the school. I really appreciate her support. Debbie Richards will be working with the teachers, as will I, on things that pop up, as well as things that we have heard from other teachers as they come to the school district, that they would appreciate knowing in a smaller group. There's a lot happening in the beginning of a school year for a new teacher, even if they are a veteran teacher and they're new to our community. So knowing who to talk to and having some time to process that, I think, will be helpful. We want our teachers to stay with us and feel that we are taking care of them. During the next two opening days of school, on August 28th and 29th, principals and teachers had time to meet together, and also to get to know their incoming students through data analysis and plans for social and emotional and personalized learning. This year, our high school and HCTC teachers participated in presentations and work sessions about mining the SAT, PSAT, and NWEA data to learn more about the students they'll work with this year, so they can provide personalized instruction based on the students' needs. Many times, families ask about the assessments that we provide for students, and it does feel as though it is time away from class, and the most important reason for these assessments is that they can inform teachers about how best to meet student needs. So we started out this year with the message that that is our goal, and that every assessment is meaningful, and that all the information we get from them will be used to tailor instruction for students to feel that they have a personalized learning experience. So it was wonderful to see HCTC and EHS teachers working together, looking through the students and finding out where their strengths were, where they could capitalize and what they cared about, what they needed support in. It was an exciting time. And at the, at EEMS, as Ms. Gabby and Ellie and Ms. Lewis talked about, they were working with their teachers on making connections with their students and learning about their internal lives, so that they can meet them at those needs as well. My special thanks to our teacher presenters at the high school in particular, who dedicated parts of last year and the summer to attending workshops and preparing the presentations. Leslie Billings, Nate Cutting, Brian Smith, and Julia Berry did an exceptional job. They really thought about how teachers most want to learn, and I think all of us can agree that when we learn from our colleagues, it's so much more meaningful than we learn from someone who's telling us what to do and doesn't, and they can't connect with them as much. So it was really, I think, impactful for them to learn from each other about what would work in the school. Teachers also had time to work in their rooms and collaborate with their colleagues to best prepare for this year's students. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Higgins?
It's my turn. Well, much of my report is gonna echo on some of the positive comments made by our other administrators, but it certainly has been a positive opening to the 1920s school year. One of the things that I'd like to highlight from the opening days was the fact that there has certainly been a change in attitude towards public education from the city of Augusta, the Department of Education, and the Commissioner's Office, and the Governor's Office. And one of the things that was pleased to share, and I think I forwarded it to all of you, was a video that was put together by the main Department of Education and new Commissioner Pendermaiken, not just celebrating the value and the great things going on with public education, but thanking all of the people in our schools for the work that they do. I hope you've all had a chance to view the video. I can tell you that our staff was very appreciative of what they heard and what they saw, and to me, it's a great way to start the year, recognizing the great things that all these people out here and all the people in our buildings do for kids. You've heard Mrs. Bowles, Mr. Clifford, and Mrs. Lewis talk a little bit about numbers. Well, you know, I'm a superintendent, I like to talk about numbers also. My enrollment figures are current, and I'm not being competitive, folks, but my enrollment numbers are current as of 1:00 today from Infinite Campus. What we're looking at right now, and for you, looking at the chart, if you want to look at a comparison of one year to the next, for example, if you look at grade K from April of 19, look at grade 1 from September of 9. That's the comparison. But what I've shown you is a breakdown of the April 1 counts, and even though it was September 9 that I started this, I went back and updated it at 1:00 today. You can see that EEMS grades pre-K through 8 were at 877 students, which actually is a decrease of 10 from last year. I think the biggest reason for that, however, is when you look at the graduating 8th grade class that went to Ellsworth High School, that was our largest class, 113 students. We replaced them with 93 kindergarteners. That accounts for that drop. But very noteworthy is Ellsworth High School. What we're looking at right now, we had 452 students in April. We now have 504 students at Ellsworth High School. And we're looking at a total increase of 42 students based upon numbers at 1:00 today. And again, as Mrs. Bowles said, October 1st is the cutoff date when we have to file our enrollment with the Department of Education, but those are healthy numbers and certainly indicative of not just the quality of our school system, but the growth of our community. So we're very pleased with that. We have hired some new staff members since your last board meeting. John Caldwell has joined the school department as a custodian at Ellsworth High School, Jay White as an Ed Tech 3 and Special Ed at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School, and Theo Dumas is gonna be the tech director at Ellsworth High School. We still have a couple of vacancies, even though, even though we had one of our teachers in grade 5 come back from a position she transferred to to take on grade 5, we do have a grade 5 vacancy, and we're still accepting applications for that. We're also still looking for a Special Ed teacher in grades, excuse me, 5 through 8, and a speech-language pathologist. Again, that's probably the biggest challenge right there. Those people are not easy to find, so we're putting another call-out, so anyone that's watching tonight, if you know an SLP who's looking to work, tell them to contact our office. And in adult ed, Mrs. Sargent is looking for an evening coordinator. I would like to close my report tonight, just a reminder to all of our citizens, if school is back in session, things are very positive, but a reminder that the big yellow school buses are out on the road, and a reminder to everybody to please heighten their awareness of all of our vehicles and our drivers who are transporting our most precious resource, which is our children. When you see the lights flashing, the yellow lights and the red lights, please be sure to stop, and we appreciate the work of our transportation supervisor, Donnie Saunders, and our drivers in the Ellsworth School Department, because they are vigilant. They make sure that our kids are safe, and they're one of the most active groups in making sure that somebody that does pass a school bus is reported. So with that, that concludes my report. We're off to a great start, and we're looking forward to another great year.
Can I add something to that?
Please.
We have a lot of students who wait beside the road to get on the school bus, and people have to be very aware when driving up a road that there are children there, and not to be texting or doing something that's distracting, but to watch for these children, because as the school year goes on, it will be a little darker in the morning, or a little darker when they get off the bus at night, and you need to be vigilant and check, and drive carefully, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'd also just like to thank the community, the business community, that has been sponsoring some advertised, radio advertising that I'm hearing each day, reminding people with our resource, our school resource officers doing some of them, our chief of police has been doing some of them, but those, I think, are being sponsored by businesses within our community, just reminding people that a really great time of day, that the buses are out there and the children are out there, and just thank you, community, for running those reminders.
Thank you.
Item H, committee reports. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Item I, all business, we have none. Item J, we've done J1, so acknowledgement of Personnel Committee's action on behalf of the board.
Mr. Hudson, would you like to take this, or would you like me to take this?
We can take it, right?
Sure.
You wanna do it, or?
Go ahead.
So during the summer, the board authorizes the two members of the Personnel Committee, myself and Mr. Hudson, to act on behalf of the board in approving the hiring of new teachers, because we've got some time constraints in the summer, and we need to let them know quickly whether they've got the job or not. So we were, since our last meeting, school board meeting a month ago, we've hired Holly Libby, grade 3 teacher, Sarah Domarecki, gifted and talented teacher, Misty Holson, life skills for K through 4, Melissa Richard, grade 1, and Sarah Palmer, EHS Special Ed.
As we typically, we actually have one of those teachers that was confirmed over the last couple of weeks, who was in attendance this evening, and the other four weren't able to be here, but would like to present grade 3 teacher at EEMS, Holly Libby. Holly was recommended for the grade 3 position by the building committee based on her interview and her successful experiences working as an Ed Tech 3 and a VHP. Interview committee thought she demonstrated solid knowledge of instruction and assessment, and she would fit in very well with the grade 3 team. References described her as student-centered and professional, and the committee believes that she's gonna be a solid beginning teacher at EEMS. So Ms. Libby is here.
Welcome to our school department.
And I think as is customary, the board is gonna take action to confirm Personnel Committee's action, and then I would like to make one other introduction if I could.
I make a motion that the board confirm the actions taken by the committee on behalf of the board.
Second. And a second goodbye.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And at your last meeting, you confirmed other teachers that were confirmed by the Personnel Committee, and one of them was not able to attend that evening, but she is here this evening. Our new music teacher at Ellsworth Middle School comes to us with a few years' experience working in Connecticut. Her name is Beverly Brown, and welcome.
Welcome. J3, consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, we had that item on the agenda in the event that we filled one of the vacancies that I just listed for you. We're still looking, so we don't need to do that item this evening.
Okay. J4, election of delegate and alternate to the Main School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
Yes, and as you know, the fall conference is coming up at the end of October, and historically you have appointed a delegate and an alternate to serve at the MSBA's Delegate Assembly. So we would open that up to the board.
Well, Paul.
Yes.
You've been our delegate for the last couple of years. Would you be willing to do it again?
I'd certainly be willing to do it again. I actually think, two years ago, I wasn't the delegate. I think Kelly was. But I've done it before that, and I did it last year, and I'd be happy to do it again, unless one of the other members would prefer.
I don't see any takers right now.
How many of us are planning on going to the MSMA Fall Conference? I know, Abby, you expressed a possible interest or an interest in...
Yes, depends. I have to find out what happens if I have to back out, because my husband gets deployed for a hurricane.
Oh, right.
Because that's a real possibility at that point. I have no family here or family, so I don't know.
But yeah, I'm planning on going to the conference, so I can...
I am too, so.
So that means you'll have to be the alternate.
Do you need that to be a formal motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that Paul be the delegate and Brenda be the alternate for the 2019 Fall Conference.
Second.
And thank you very much.
Discussion? All those in favor? Annual review of the Ellsworth School Department Emergency Management Plan.
This is a, an annual task that the board has, is to review our overall district emergency management and response plan. What I've provided you is a copy of the confidential plan, along with a description of the changes that have taken place and are recommended. In essence, the changes are updating the new staffing information, titles and contact information throughout the document, updating list of trained personnel. We train people, and you've heard about it, I think, in the earlier reports, in safety care training. We include those in the document, those will be included. But the most specific change comes in one of our response procedures, which is confidential. If you look at the cover sheet of the plan that I gave to you, and if you look on the back page, you're gonna see italicized print. That is, you didn't get one, Mrs. Thomas.
I think they're all my favorite.
It's not two-sided, okay. Well, in your plan, if you look on, we can take care of that. If you look on page 13, in the second section, both the eighth bulleted item down, you'll see some italicized print. This is an expansion of that response scenario, and while you're looking at that, what I can tell you is that was developed over the course of a couple of years. Over the course of the summer, as we're required to do, leadership team sits down and talks about the plan and talks about proposed changes. We implemented some changes last year. Following that meeting, we met with Chief Mosher, who has been specifically trained in the procedures, in specific, the one that we're proposing an amendment to. And what we're talking about implementing is what you see in the italicized print. And again, what the impetus behind this is, is protecting our students and staff and preserving life.
Okay, thank you.
And if there were specific questions that you had on that, because it's confidential, I would ask you to go into executive session. And again, as we're often talking about when you're dealing with your emergency response plans, sometimes the conversations are not easy, but the conversations we have to have, because as we talked about with transportation, our most precious resources are our students and our staff. And we're fortunate to have a great emergency management community here in Ellsworth that works collaboratively with us and gives their time to work with us.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge and accept the review of the Ellsworth School Department Emergency Management Plan as presented.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
And the documents I've given you are numbered, so you certainly can take them and review them, but I would like them back.
The next item is to assign a board member to the dropout prevention committee.
And this is an annual task that you do. Rebecca Wright, Assistant President of the High School, heads up the dropout prevention committee, and she's working on scheduling meetings. You can either take formal action this evening, and it's not required that you do this by vote, you can also do this at a workshop, but if you would like to do that this evening, you certainly may, and I can forward the name to Mrs. Wright.
My thought would be to take the job description and read it over and make sure everybody understands what it involves, and maybe discuss it at our workshop.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Negotiations update.
Personnel Committee is continuing to negotiate with one of the associations, the administrative assistants, and we are, may have had several sessions, and we'll continue to do so. I don't know if the next one is scheduled for, but I mean...
No, we're, right now, trying to find a date for a meeting that had to be postponed.
Yep. So that's all we have for now. We have two other associations that we'll be negotiating with before the end of the school year.
Thank you. I'm going to skip, skip ahead to K, calendar and announcements. School Board Workshop will be on Tuesday, September 24th, at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 6:00, and next school board meeting will be Tuesday, October 8th, City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30. I'm gonna go back to the previous item, which is an executive session for 1 MRS A20A I'm going to go back to previous item, which is an executive session for 1MRS-A20A 4056B for the sole purpose of conducting two due-process readmission hearings.
I move that we go into executive session as described.
Second. Discussion? All of us in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.